Okay, good afternoon. I would like to call the meeting to order at 1:00. Ms. Ramírez, please confirm the quorum.
Yes, ma'am. We have trustee Dr. Mackey, trustee Steen, vice chair Romero, and yourself. We have four trustees. We have a quorum.
Item number two, which is the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Aquisha? Actually, I'm sorry. I hope I did. I'm sorry. Gonzalez, to provide the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance. And before you start, can you enunciate your name correctly so we're all familiar with it?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. It's Ashika Gonzalez.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Ms. Gonzalez, please proceed with the safety message invocation and pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We first wanted to review the evacuation procedures so that we are prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass door exiting out of the boardroom to the outside. If that door is blocked, use the back door. Verbally alert others in the room and evacuate. Then move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the A T and T parking lot over the McCullough Brooklyn Bridges. In the event of a situation like this, our security team will be monitoring the situation and will notify the appropriate emergency services and team members. We also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority at C P S Energy, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to be sure we are always ready. Will you please stand with me for an invocation? For a quiet moment, I invite you to express gratitude for our health, for our families and friends, and for the opportunity to come together as a community today. We honor our trustees for the responsibilities they bear. We wish them success today in making decisions with wisdom and humility. We are reminded that we are all stewards acting on behalf of our customers. May we accomplish our goals together with that singular purpose in mind. Now, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez, and welcome to the team. Item number three, public comment. Ms. Natalia Lopez, please proceed with the public comment.
Public comment provides an opportunity for members of the public to share thoughts on posted agenda items for this meeting.
To this board, and I might want to say that Francine, I expect you to do the same when your turn is up, when you're on for the chairmanship. But also, I would like to say that the Marlborough Street Girl Gang is very happy because we survived the freeze. Rudy, you did great. You proved yourself that you deserve the position that you have. And also, I pray every day that this board gets more cohesive and better and unite in making great decisions. And think of others that you are helping not of yourself or your personal gang gain. But also, I would ask Richard if he has O J T position because Felipe stayed behind. He started digging because he says he would like to apply at the gas department. And he's scared of heights, so I don't think he'd apply for the electrician. But I want to thank everybody here, every worker that's here. Thank you for the dedication and hard work that you give to C P S Energy because it affects all of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Our next speaker is Armando Almanza.
Good afternoon, Chairman Janey. I'm glad you're one of the members. I read about you in the paper. I'm here today. It's not very pleasant. It's about your marked thermostat. Two months ago, we got our bill for over $700. We have solar panels that I appreciate that I bought through C P S program a few years ago, saving me a lot of money. Prior to this high bill, my monthly bills were $20 a month. When I first got the panels, they were $2.50 a month. Well, something happened in December that a spike came and a meter man came to our house. I had been complaining, went to your field office, and we were told that they were notified through your computer system, I don't know how it works, I'm not an expert, that our house was spiking. They sent a meter man to check the meter. It was okay. We were never notified. The guy never came to our door. We were never given a phone call, mail, email address, everything that's required from a customer. We were never told. The only notification I got when I got the $748 bill, that was my notification. I never got anywhere with C P S for a month. I was at my wits' end. I was going nutty till I saw the article about Janey and her being the C E O for Webhead. So I came up with the idea to call that company and got a hold of her right-hand man, Joseph. I called him her right-hand man. I don't know if he is or not. And he helped me. He heard my complaint, said, "I'll tell Janey." Sure enough, I got a response right away. It was escalated. My problem was escalated. Things started to roll. But anyway, this has to change. These notifications have to be put out when there's a problem at your house. And I was experiencing a lot of emotional, couldn't sleep for two months, still can't. So I like to have that addressed, that people have to be notified that there's something wrong, okay? Now, I was going through a lot of emotional trauma. I have the money to pay. It came up to over $1,000 and something now. What's ironic is you board members experienced the same thing I did during the freeze. I'm sure a lot of your emotions and your world was flipped upside down, right? How are we going to pay 600 times the value of per, what is it, linear foot for gas? Your world was turned upside down. Well, mine was too. Now, I have a few suggestions. If anybody wants to email me on how this matter can be addressed, I have a lot of experience. Two months. The other suggestion I would do.
Mr. Armando, I'm sorry, the time is up, but wait, 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 wait. Your comments matter. I'll make sure someone from the team will continue to follow up because your suggestions are important. And then I'll do a listens learn so that we can see collectively how we can continue to address, making sure, communication. And again, I need a deeper dive. I'm just glad we're in a position to be able to help you thus far, but I want to be respectful of.
This woman cares about the people, just like you said. She cares.
Thank you. And again, please make sure that someone follows up with him. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your input. That was our last registered speaker.
Thank you very much. And please, again, to the speakers, thank you and make sure we follow up. The next item is chairman's remark. A little rusty. See what happens when you disconnect for a month. So again, welcome, everyone. As we assemble for the first meeting since December 31, 2023, I want to express my appreciation to all of you. It is an honor to be back here with you and continue our journey into 2024. So we will start with the winter service highlights. Again, I want to start by acknowledging the C P S Energy team members' exceptional preparedness during the recent severe cold weather conditions. Their efforts have ensured our community remains informed and prepared for winter, outlining clear actions for our customers to stay safe during cold spells. I want a special thanks to all the crew members raving the freezing temperatures and to our dedicated plant team members. Again, your waving a commitment to our community well-being is truly commendable. A shout out to the power generation team, glass supply, electric delivery systems, and energy system market operations teams. Again, thank you to all of you. Again, we just have again this sporadic extreme weather pattern, so it's, this won't be the first or the last time we'll be thanking you, but again, we just want to make sure that we're on top of things. And again, I want to encourage the public engagement that we continue to do so, ensuring our community remains engaged and well-informed at C P S activities is a priority for us. We're committed in fostering transparency and always encouraging open dialogue. To facilitate this, we're not only offering opportunities for public input before our meetings, but also organizing public sessions. We'll see an increase in that. This will also be held in the evenings, starting at 5:30 on March 25 and October 28. And that concludes my public comments. Does any board have any questions or additional comments to that? If not, thank you. And we'll now move to agenda item number five, to approval of the consent agenda.
I move that we approved consent agenda minutes of the regular board meeting held on November 13, 2023, minutes of the special board meeting held on December 4, 2023, minutes to be of the regular board meeting held on December 18, 2023, pavement to the city of San Antonio for December 2023, procurement items, general services, complete streetlight program support services, professional services, two, engineering service for transmission planning and operation, three, general services, overhead electric distribution services, four, professional service, electric distribution designs and engineering service, five, general service, exposing, evacuating, and trenching underground utility service, six, professional service, additional funding requested, engineering service for Lake Dam, seven, engineering, general services, additional funding requests, power generation code welding and mechanical service. Move that we approve these, Madam Chair.
And again, everyone, we do have a good amount of items, so please review carefully.
Second.
Okay. Does the board have any further discussions before we vote? Okay. Ms. Chaney, proceed with roll call, please.
Trustee Dr. Mackey.
Yes.
Trustee Steen.
No.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and item number six, we'll be discussing auto transformer procurement item. Richard Medina.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair trustees. Oops, I think this thing moved too fast. Today, I'm going to cover auto transformers, which is a procurement item. It's a new contract, and we'll be requesting board approval at the end. So auto transformers are large transmission transformers. They convert power from our 345 K V system to our 138 system, and we need these transformers to support reliability and growth. It also helps bring in more renewable power from the south, and we're building some new transmission lines. These transformers are very large. You can see a picture there on the right-hand side there of an auto transformer. This is a five-year contract for $60 million. We did have five respondents, and we're awarding to two awardees, which is Rural Smith and Hyundai Electric. And that's all for the procurement item. Now, we're just sharing this with the board today because we did have initially transformer issues with residential and then some three-phase pads, and these are the larger ones that go into our transmission system. So we're just sharing with the trustees because the lead times are getting a lot longer now. So these big transformers are taking now two to three years to procure, and I'll be requesting your approval.
Okay, Madam Chair, I move that we approve the auto transformer procurement, item six.
Second.
Any questions before we proceed? Go ahead, Mr. Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Medina. We just on our consent agenda, I did a quick calculation, and we were being asked there to blanketly approve expenditures where the total of the purchase order value was around $450 million or close to half a billion dollars. So I was wondering, and you partially answered it, maybe you could answer it more, a number of those were your procurement items and some were Mr. Etheridge's. But why are those put on the consent agenda and then this one, which was a $60 million item?
Well, typically, in the past, we were putting all procurement items on the consent. We were briefing the operational oversight committee with all the procurement items, and these all were briefed prior to this meeting. We were spotlighting this one because it is transformers, and the public had been seeing we're having a hard time getting transformers. So the residential ones that we talked about before, we do have a lot of those in stock now. We are having some issues with three-phase transformers, which are for the large commercial customers, but we have a program in place, and we have ordered enough supply to cover those. And then these are the power, big transformers that go on the transmission system. So we're also having issues, so we're now trying to get some longer contracts in place so that we can order these big units.
Just a little bit of a follow-up. Who makes that call?
Myself and the chair are responsible for the agenda.
All right, thank you.
And I just want to, can you reiterate again what meetings took place and who was briefed for the procurement items that are outlined, and we have detailed information?
I was going to answer that question.
Okay.
I can answer that question.
Mr. Dr. Mackey, go ahead.
These items came before the committee, Audit and Finance Committee. We reviewed them. Y'all reviewed them with us, and we recommended that it be on the board agenda, that we do this. And the difference was the major transformer is different from the regular transformer that we approve all the time. Now, if anybody don't want to approve the transformers, let's cut all the lights out because if it doesn't go through the end, that means the lights are not going to come on. So these are necessity items that we have to have in order to approve, in order to make sure the lights are done. Because without the transformer, you'll burn up everything in the city of San Antonio because it regulates what goes on in San Antonio. That's why these things are so important, and that's why I didn't say much, but I knew the importance because I was part of the committee to recommend this. Now, if you don't understand transformers, get schooled on what they are, because if you don't have them, you'll blow up everything in San Antonio without that. So you have to have it. So this, the major transformer, I'm glad you reviewed it. We need it. We have to have it. Thank you.
Chair, I'll note that the auto transformers was presented June 29, 2023, to the Operations Oversight Committee, and it was presented to Audit and Finance on July 20, 2023, just for clarity.
Go ahead, Ms. Steen.
And I wasn't going to get into this today, but I just began to think about how we've fallen into the routine of approving huge expenditures with no public discussion and whether that approach comports with C P S Energy's commitment to train.
How we run the organization where you have ample opportunity through the process to be able to speak to not just the C E O, but Richard, as well as myself, or any item that can be concerning Mr. Steen. But I do, I do appreciate your feedback, and we'll continue to find ways to, again, increase transparency and participation through the process.
Would you like me to poll the trustees? So as a reminder, this is on the auto transformer procurement. We have a motion and a second. Trustee Dr. Mackey. Trustee Steen.
Yes.
Vice Chair Romero.
Yes.
Chair.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're now moving to, let me make sure I'm correct. There's a lot of items. We're on to agenda. Yeah, I just want to make sure. No, I got it. We're still under regular agenda. Item number seven, which is committee reports, Operation Oversight Committee meeting held on 12:05, 2023. Dr. Francine Rometto, discussion.
I don't have anything to add beyond the minutes, which are excellent as always. Thank you.
Okay, no further discussion. We're going to go ahead and move on to item number eight, which is board committee assignments. A copy of the current board committee assignments has been placed in your board book. I'm proposing the same assignments for the 2025 fiscal year. Please review, and if you would like to request changes, please reach out to me since we will vote on this item on February, board of trustees, regular meeting on March 4. Does any board member have any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you so much. We will now move to regular agenda, item number nine, which is 2025 Enterprise Annual Scorecard by Dr. John Soltal.
Let me, before John gets going, I wanted to just provide a little bit of lead-in to this item. We've been talking about, you know, kind of updating our enterprise metrics, you know, over the last couple of years. This year, we really, this, well, the fiscal year just ended. We really spent time thinking as a leadership team about how we're currently measuring our performance, how we could measure our performance in terms of all the ways you could, you know, view the performance with the sole intention on really one driver. Are our measures, are the things that we say we do well or don't do well, are they relevant to our customers? And so the work that John's about to lay out and the team really has been the culmination of the organization work on this with, in consultation with the board. Again, you know, we want to make sure that we're viewing success through the eyes of our customers. And so this conversation really is just to get feedback from the trustees. It's my job to set performance expectations for the organization. Board's job is to set their expectations of me, and, you know, we will make sure those are consistent. But with that, I'll turn it over to John. This has been good work. This isn't, these aren't my, you know, metrics. This is the metrics of my leadership team with the work that we've done with the third party to get to this point. So with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Thank you, Rudy. Thank you, Chair Gonzalez and trustees, for the time today to review our enterprise scorecard for fiscal 2025, which began February 1. Few items for awareness. Number one, we did brief this to the Operations Oversight Committee in December of last year. There's three main takeaways I'd like you to think about as we go through this. Number one, everything within this scorecard is aligned with our Vision 2027 strategic plan. It's aligned with the budget, which is the next agenda item, aligned with recommendations from the Operational Efficiency Review, which is conducted by Daymark and Gallup about two years ago, and ultimately, direction from this board. The second main takeaway is that we developed this in partnership with a number of external experts to make sure that we are challenging and pushing ourselves, H Bailey Consultants, specifically, who's here today. And finally, that this scorecard provides a transparent, strategic, and balanced approach to evaluate our performance, not only how we're delivering today, but preparing for tomorrow. Four main topics I'll hit on, how we're evaluating, accelerating our evolution, specifically around Vision 2027, and an update on those strategic initiatives, reviewing our enterprise measures for the coming year, and then ultimately looking at the scorecard itself. As we've all been aware, we've been on a significant journey over the last two years, really focused on, you know, being more sustainable and innovative in our solutions, engaging, enhancing our customer experience, and rebuilding trust. This scorecard reemphasizes that continued work and provides a way to measure how we're progressing on that journey. Important part of any performance program is how you set stretch and achievable targets. This actually was brought up at the December board meeting, and as you can see, we have a very dynamic process that we go through, which considers a multitude of factors. They're on the right. Everything from headwinds and tailwinds to results achieved by others through benchmarking and ultimately the value to our customer and how it aligns with our ultimate strategy. We go through this process, again, with a number of experts, and we come to alignment in the belief that our goals are stretch and achievable. I'd like to quickly update where we are in working towards our Vision 2027 objectives. We have four main strategic initiatives that are helping us drive forward, the first being the Power Generation Resource Plan. This is the plan that was approved by the board last January with the work that we had done with the rate advisory committee, and really focuses on how do we achieve our sustainability goals aligned with cap while remaining reliable and affordable to our customers. You'll notice one of the main milestones that we have is working through the ERCOP process of beginning to retire our aging Brawn units. The second initiative is system resiliency and growth, and this is how we're really responsibly supporting our expanding community, ensuring that we can deliver services to our new customers while still being reliable for our existing customers. You see from the milestones, this is a multifaceted initiative, including work on our gas system, our electric system, and even how we manage the grid. Our third initiative is Evolve ERP. This is focused on updating our 20-plus-year-old core technology system so we can be more efficient, more secure, and more data-driven in our decisions to deliver products and services to our customers. One of our key milestones this year is really selecting the right implementation partner that'll help us achieve those outcomes and stay on track. The final initiative is customer experience, where we're looking to go beyond just satisfying our customers, but helping them be engaged by ensuring that we're easy to work with, we're building trust, and ultimately, that we're providing value. One of the main milestones we have this year is really enhancing our outreach and making sure that it aligns with the type of messaging that the customer prefers. Now, I know this slide is an eyesore, and my team is continually working on it, but the main takeaway here is, you know, those four strategic initiatives I mentioned on the left, we have long-term plans for each one of those that span throughout Vision 2027 with multiple work streams in each one. I think the key takeaway is those milestones I just shared with you are essential to ensuring that we stay on track to achieve not only our goals for Vision 2027, but position us to even achieve greater goals as we look beyond to 2040 and 2050. I think it's important to note that this is just the tip of the iceberg of the work that we're doing daily to keep the lights on and the gas flowing. This is really focused on how we change our business, but we do a lot of work around running the business effectively today. For performance around that, we leverage our enterprise measures, which with recommendations from Daymark, we've taken a more strategic approach this year, going from 16 to eight, of which six are new at this level, and two I'd like to walk through in a little bit more detail.
Well, and Dr. Mackey, I'll just point out, when you, during your chairmanship, when we were working on Vision 2027, you asked for an execution, you know, timeline. This is, you know, this is my Dr. Mackey slide. So we've tried to update this as we go to show you kind of new time horizons as they come up.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't on the shelf collecting dust. Thank you.
The first measure I would like to talk about is our fiscal resiliency. I think there's been a number of conversations over the last year, how do we holistically look at our financial position and the different factors without focusing on any single one measure that might overburden our customers. So we worked with our financial advisors to identify seven key financial measures that you see there in that second column, and then we weighted them based upon the general importance of our rating agencies. And together, this creates an index that we can then leverage key bands or thresholds expected at different rating levels to evaluate our overall financial resiliency and performance. You see column three there highlighted, which aligns with our current bond rating and the targets that we're setting for this year with this index. I think this is a much more strategic way to view our finances, allows us to make decisions as necessary to support our customers while still ensuring that we are being financially stable, as well as it provides a view that if we are to potentially want to increase our bond rating, the target that you see, targets you'd see in the four would be some of those that we'd have to start to hit. At the enterprise level, we will be reporting on the index, but it is still important for the board and the community to know how we perform in each one of these measures individually, and you'll receive that through the financial report and update, as well as with our progress around accounts receivable. The second measure I want to highlight is our gas safety, which is leaks at the end of the year per 1,000 customer. I think this is important to highlight because if I was a customer and I heard this, my first concern would be you have leaks in your system at the end of the year. We want to be really clear that according to the Railroad Commission, there are three different grades of leaks based upon their location and their size. For all grade one or hazardous leaks, as well as any leak reported by a customer, we immediately fix. So this measure is really looking at those lower-level leaks at the end of the year, with the intention is as we decrease these over time, we're becoming more efficient, safer, and ultimately, more sustainable. I think an important thing to note is that this really focuses on leaks within our own system, and I appreciate Dr. Romero for challenging us to begin to think about how we can system, and I appreciate Dr. Omero for challenging us to begin to think about how we can, in the future, look at how our partners are managing their own leaks as we're making supply decisions moving forward. As I mentioned, that is just two of the eight enterprise measures for this year that you see in that second column grouped by our Vision 2027 objectives. In that middle column, you see the targets that we set this year, based upon, again, that process we previously discussed, those six factors, and coming to alignment with external expertise like H Bailey. As some of these are new, I want to briefly walk through these. You'll find more detail on each one in your appendix, as well as you'll receive a more detailed report on our target-setting approach and future considerations from H Bailey in the coming weeks. The first measure is our average customer outage duration. This is our SADI metric, which we previously had. Plant availability focuses on are our plants operating when we need them the most in the winter and the summer. I think it's important to note here that this target is less aggressive than what we saw performance this year, and that's because as our units are aging, we are shifting investments to more long-term, sustainable solutions. Gas safety and fiscal resiliency, I previously just discussed. Customers' perception is moving beyond just satisfaction and looking at how we have an engaged customer relationship through an index that's really looking at trust, ease of working with, and the products and services we deliver, ultimately, to connect with value. In the team culture objective, you see living mission and values. This is a new measure for us, working with Gallup, that it's an index of four questions that get to the heart of culture. Our safety performance is our recordable incident rate, which we previously have had. And then finally, our strategically investing in the community. This is really focused on how we're providing, and so reporting back to the community with the percentage of local spend, which is a new measure at this level, and aligned with other initiatives across the city like Supply SA. I'll note that this is just part of the number of different key performance indicators that we measure across our business and are managing to internally. So in conclusion, I'd just like to highlight again that this is our scorecard for this coming year. Believe it provides a very balanced approach that shows how we are preparing for tomorrow with the key milestones across the top, as well as how we're continuing to deliver effectively today with the enterprise measures across the bottom. For awareness, we will continue to provide updates on a monthly and quarterly basis to the board in partnership with financial reporting and accounts receivable, as well as as other major initiatives or items come to relevancy, we'll be sharing with the board, such as progress through step. With that, I'd like to thank you for your time. Me and leadership are open to any questions or comments.
Again, does the board have any questions? Mr. Steen, the floor is yours.
I want to thank CFO Corey Kojinski and Dr. Soltow for taking the time to confer with me in advance on this topic. And both Mr. Kojinski and Dr. Soltow are impressive, knowledgeable professionals. As we consider these changes, a bit of history is in order, and if you would please put up Slide 3. I was provided this slide 11 days ago, and it had a timeline, which since has been removed, that detailed the various stages of our tiered metric program from inception to today. Before it was altered, Slide 3 documented that this journey began in 2011, 13 years ago.
Sir, I would just like to remind you that the materials that are previewed with our trustees are not public information, so I'd ask you not to disclose non-public information in this setting.
It documented that this journey began in 2011, 13 years ago, with the engagement of the Scott Madden firm headquartered in Atlanta. Founded 40 years ago, Scott Madden is one of the premier companies in the field of performance management consulting, and some rankings, it's listed as number one. With Scott Madden's guidance and expertise, CPS Energy embarked upon a strategic planning exercise to develop operational benchmark metrics and identify industry peers. Scott Madden came to us as an independent advisor to ensure fairness, objectivity, and defensibility. This effort culminated in the metrics CPS Energy has utilized for years. Now, fast forward to our board meeting last April 3rd, where management disclosed that for fiscal year 2023, and that's the year-end of January 31, 2023, CPS Energy failed to meet six of our 16 Tier 1 metrics. The six areas where our targets were not achieved were portfolio commercial availability, residential customer satisfaction, days cash on hand, debt capitalization, enterprise recordable instant rate, and executive readiness. So bottom line, CPS Energy's overall score was 10 out of 16, or 63. CPS Energy's Tier 1 metrics are often referred to as our report card, which means our final grade for fiscal year 2023 was a disappointing D minus. Of course, I felt quite let down by that result, but hope management would take this as a challenge to try even harder and perform much better in fiscal year 2024, but the response was regrettably to start softening expectations and lowering targets. I stressed then that Tier 1 metrics must be calibrated so that they drive changes, innovations, and improvements, as well as help CPS Energy focus its people and resources on what's important. To be effective, Tier 1 metrics have to be appropriately aspirational, challenging, and tough. Hitting the target should mean our company is firing on all cylinders, that is, operating at the highest level. The alternative is a slide into mediocrity. However, notwithstanding my concerns, CPS Energy did some serious easing up on its fiscal year 2024 Tier 1 metrics. Lamentably, CPS Energy began to reset what success looks like, or to use a sports metaphor, move the goalposts closer. But apparently, that wasn't enough, and if you'd please put up Slide 16. Just 11 days ago, I learned that last October CPS Energy issued a new RFP related to our metrics, to which Scott Madden responded, but the end result was management selected an Austin firm, H Bailey Group LLC, to overhaul our metrics program. And Scott Madden is a 40-year-old firm and has over 200 employees. H Bailey Group was incorporated in 2019, so it's four years old, and I think Ms. Bailey's here today, but it's my understanding that it's a one-person shop. So Heather Bailey is a respected, commended individual, but it's a challenge to stack up against venerable Scott Madden in terms of experience developing energy metrics programs. So please put up Slide 10. So since Ms. Bailey was brought on three or so months ago, where have we ended up? CPS Energy's 16 Tier 1 metrics have been essentially abandoned. Management's response to an unsatisfactory grade on our fiscal year 2023 report card has been to jettison the Tier 1 metrics we've been using for so many years. So please focus on the new Tier 1/Enterprise metrics, which have been halved in number to eight, and you'll see the eight rectangles at the bottom. Within the eight, only two of the current 16 remain. Average customer outage duration, which is SADI relabeled, and on the far left, and safety performance, RIR relabeled, in the seventh slot. And of the six areas where CPS Energy's targets were not achieved in fiscal year 2023, only one remains. Again, enterprise recordable instant rate, rebranded as safety performance. So I'll repeat, and this is something to think about, of the six metrics CPS Energy failed to achieve in fiscal year 2023, only one appears in the proposed recasting. While the whole approach is challengeable, an enterprise measure particularly concerning to me is the fourth one labeled fiscal resiliency, one of the six brand-new enterprise measures. This new reporting approach moves away from focusing exclusively on the big three financial metrics, that is, debt service coverage, debt capitalization, and days cash on hand, and in their stead introduces a novel, quote, strategically balanced, close quote, measure. I've been told this approach is being adopted as a way to simplify the presentation of CPS Energy's financial condition. When I asked what drove this simplification effort, and particularly, the weighting methodology that you'll see in the third column, oh, and I'm sorry, would you please put up Slide When I asked what drove this simplification effort, and particularly, the weighting methodology in the third column, you'll see it has that purple line around it. The response I got was our three credit rating agencies. But interestingly, when I probed further, I was told that none of the three was directly contacted about this. Further, a year ago, I was told by senior management that our credit rating agencies primarily focus on but two things, the big three financial metrics and flow of funds. So what's changed? My thought is that perhaps these proposed modifications are a way to direct the spotlight away from the big three metrics, because two of them had been headed in the wrong direction, and according to management forecasts, will likely worsen in the coming years. For example, our debt capitalization ratio, a leverage metric, where lower is better, continues to exceed the 60% threshold, and dismayingly, is projected to increase to 67.9% in fiscal year 2029, even with the planned every-two-year rate hikes baked in. It's hard to escape the conclusion that the purpose of presenting CPS Energy's financial strength in this new format is to befog metrics trending in the wrong direction. And while we've been assured trustees will continue to receive periodic updates on the big three financial metrics, I'm concerned that henceforth, they won't be included in the board packet for our meetings, in other words, removed from the public scrutiny, as well as focus in discussion by the board. So please put up Slide 3. Ironically, the fifth bullet point about how CPS Energy is providing value to our customers is this phrase, rebuilding trust through enhanced transparency. And I repeat, enhanced transparency, when reality, what's being proposed in terms of fiscal resiliency measure, can more accurately be described as not transparency, but obfuscation, that is, making something more obscure and difficult to grasp, perhaps to direct attention away from red flags that CPS Energy's financial condition is not what it should be. So in closing, two points. First, we're right at three years down the road from winter storm Yuri. In Yuri's aftermath, all three credit rating agencies downgraded CPS Energy, and two of the three put us on negative outlook. This downgrading continues to this day, and after three years, it's unacceptable that no restoration progress has been achieved. I can't help but believe that if the right things have been prioritized early on, such as aggressive cost control and cost reduction, as well at least pausing, if not altogether foregoing, expensive but unnecessary fiscal commitments, by now, we'd be well on our way back to where we were rating-wise pre-Yuri, and by the same token, in a much healthier position financially. Second, in line with the compliment I extended to him earlier, I believe that Dr. Soltow is doing an exemplary job, the best he can under the circumstances. My hunch is that the actions I'm taking exception to today did not spring from him. I want to be diplomatic as I can when I assert that board leadership is not merely enabling this process of redefining success, it's driving it. And with all due respect, the proper role of a trustee is to challenge management to stretch, not encourage or direct management to move the goalposts closer. And I'll repeat that. With all due respect, the proper role of a trustee is to challenge management to stretch, not encourage or direct management to move the goalposts closer. Since we aren't being afforded the opportunity to vote on this, I respectfully request that in order to memorialize my opposition to the direction being taken with this proposed annual enterprise scorecard, my statement be included in full in the minutes of today's meeting, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. Quick question. You said trustee or trustees? Can you be clear on that? I just... Yeah, I wasn't sure if it was one trustee you're isolating or...
Yes, ma'am. The last thing I said, with all due respect, the proper role of a trustee.
Okay, thank you. I believe there's comments, Dr. Omero?
One quick question, John. I hadn't noticed this before. On Slide 6, system resiliency and growth, that's the only one that doesn't have a team culture component to it, and I'd like to know why.
So there's definitely a team culture component as we are continually training and developing new employees and currently existing employees. Unfortunately, for room on this, we just had to drop it, but that is a big gap on ours. So as we continue to rework this slide, we'll make sure it's included in the future.
Okay, thank you, because I, and I know you're doing it. I know that was part of the point of our outside reviewers, to say that it has to be embedded in everything, not just some parts of what we do. And I wanted to thank you for your comments about how our partners are managing their own leaks, and I know there's a lot of difficulty in getting that certification from our suppliers on the methane leaks, but I wanted to let the environmental community know that we're not forgetting about this, because that was, I know that everybody should be concerned about this. It doesn't get talked about a whole lot. So thank you for that. I know you're doing what you can. I guess in response to trustee Steen's comments, that we should be challenging management to stretch, I feel like I've been doing that all along, ever since I started two years ago, pretty much a couple of months later, we started with this, with this whole direction. I just, I want to say very clearly, I absolutely disagree with what you're saying, and I think it's important, it's very important for me to say this, because I don't want people in the community to have the wrong idea. And I think what you said, with all due respect, gives the wrong idea. We've been working on this a long time, and I believe Dr. Soltow has, that we've been engaged in a very constructive, two-way conversation, either one-on-one as a group or as a group. I think we have all been working on it as exactly what this is supposed to be. As Rudy said, a better way to work with the community on measures that are important to them, but also on measures that we all think are important as part of our responsibility. You know, I don't see it as moving the goalposts. For example, when we're talking about things like fiscal resiliency, one of the reasons I really like this new approach is because every time we had these, I used to say, tell me again how this works, how sometimes one needs to go up and the other needs to go down, and I'm sure you got tired of hearing that question all the time, but it's a valid thing to talk about, right? They can't all be going in the right direction at the same time, or we can't be growing necessarily. And I feel that these new metrics are a way to capture all of that, to capture what we're doing to grow, and to capture the dynamics of what we're doing. And I know that some of these metrics are based on industry standards, but I don't want it to be that there's just some magic to these metrics, and if we touch them, we're moving the goalposts, because I don't believe that's true. I think that would be a lack of transparency, to just say, oh, here's the numbers, why aren't you meeting them this month? I think if we're doing that, we're not showing our understanding of the living aspect of these metrics. So, and I don't, I totally trust Dr. Soltow on this, and to say he's doing the best he can under the circumstances, I believe implies something that I have seen absolutely no indication of. And so I just want to say to the community, maybe we have disagreements on this, I think this is really an important indication of how we are moving and how we are reacting to a very, very changing world, and if we were still using those same metrics, I don't think we'd be doing our jobs. And I also, I don't see this as something where we keep getting bad news, keep getting bad news, and then they come and tell us, oh, yeah, we need to change those metrics. We're not seeing that. We're not seeing problems. We're seeing wins, and we're seeing greater responsiveness to customer needs and to the changing climate. And again, we've been talking about this back and forth for two years, and so I don't feel like I've had these... And so I don't feel like I've had these foisted on me, and I do feel a lot of security in these measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Romero. Dr. Mackey?
As a sitting board member, I strongly believe in our vision 2027 and strategic objectives. I am not certain that we're performing at the optimal standards against our values and objectives. I would like to highlight four areas where we can stretch to improve our reach, ensuring we meet our overarching objectives. Formal discipline for CPS Energy communication, community partnership and growth, operational evolution, and digital transformation, rate increase, service-oriented culture. Formal discipline for CPS Energy communication. CPS Energy needs to take a strategic and programmatic approach to communication evident today, planning and executing across the key CPS stakeholders, group, and channels as the customers' communities at large. Communication should not be transactional and should align with an overarching CPS Energy communication strategy. Questions? Do we have an established number of key communication channels that can be leveraged on a moment's notice should that we be needed? Do we have regular cadence in newspaper outlets, social media, community, and political channels? How and when are we intentionally and regularly communicating with our internal and external stakeholders? Community partnership and growth. While CPS Energy has some amazing programs that benefit the community, I am certain that most of our residents don't know our footprint in their communities. We serve in many capacities, supporting Boy Scouts, Girls Club, Boy Scouts, museum sponsors, mentorships, internships at local high schools, sustainability of appliance, weatherization supports, and recently will lay out COVID impact, consumers delay, and paying their bills, utility bills. We continue to aid when necessary. We have been very lenient over the past few years with late payments, to a fault, and it costs us way too much money and time. While we provide a service, and when needed, we would just schedule for payment. We need consumers to understand the firm approach that we are now taking. Consumers must become more proactive when financial problems arise and contact us to make payments and to ensure utility service continues. They also need to understand CPS will hold them accountable for payments. Question. How do we better, how can we better in this area and make our customers' community better informed? Question two. Are we running analytics to determine how many customers are aware of what we are doing to community and many assist them programs we offer? What do the analytics reveal? How can we improve our delivery outcome? It is clear that upgrading our digital operation evolution and digital transformation is a priority, and accelerating the digital transformation process is essential to enhancing our overall efficiencies and security measures. Have we performed a thorough analysis of our existing infrastructure, application, and data to understand where improvements are needed? Have we prioritized our areas such as data protection, network security, endpoint security, users' awareness training? Do we conduct regular surveys and training sessions to ensure that employees are aware of potential risks and know how to mitigate them? Have we established a systematic process to monitoring and implementing updates prompt to reduce the risk to exploitation? What is our timeline for complete digital transformation? Recent rate increase, service-oriented culture, building a comprehensive plan that speaks to why injury rates are increased and what consumers expect from that increase? Question number one. Have CPS Energy leaders communicate effectively about the reasons behind our rate increase and their confidence in the organization's ability to adapt and thrive? Have we clearly explained how the rate increase benefit the consumers for the short-term and long-term future? Are we engaged in regular assessment and reviews to identify areas for improvement and acknowledge successful initiatives? In our organization setting, an example for actively participating in energy-saving initiative and demonstrating a commitment to responsible resource management. Have we established regular internal and external communication channels to keep employees informed about changes and provide a platform for them to ask questions or express concern? Lastly, if we are an existing communication platform, are we collecting analytics to evaluate how the community is feeling about the rate increase and if they understand how long benefits they will review? Reviewing and visiting all the plants and solars and all of this stuff has been very challenging. I think CPS has been doing a tremendous job. As far as challenging on the 2027, if people read that, they will see that we've done a very good job in challenging. I feel like y'all are doing a great job. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mackey. I want to thank all the trustees for giving their input. The only thing that I would like to conclude is, winter Yuri as well as the pandemic, the reality is that not all the communities that we served, serve, came out even. We had to respond. Many of them did not come out of those events in the best conditions. In addition to that, you know, I had the privilege and the hard work of not the first rate increase, but also the second rate increase, to meet in the community with the average individual who oftentimes comes through to speak, and sometimes they don't have the means to come and speak. I mean, I went to so many different public input sessions, and I did it for a reason. I didn't do it because I wanted to lower the bar down at CPS. I did it because one of the things that I heard loud and clear was, you failed us. You were not there for us in the time of need, and you need to earn our trust. So I took that, even before I became chairman, to heart. So I made it a point to be very engaged. I also had the privilege of, while we were going through the second rate increase, also going through my reconfirmation. So I got a lot of feedback from city council, and I will tell you, it was very interesting. One of them was, and I think I was just called out for not being an effective chairman, for lowering the bar down, one of the feedbacks for one of the council persons was that I was leaning in too hard and that I was not, you know, I was leaning in very hard to accomplish what we needed, and I needed to tone it down. And so it's interesting that when you're a leader, one, you're not here to be popular; two, you have a job to do. And as a trained CEO, a trained CEO for 30 years of a small business that weathers many economic ups and downs, is that we're only as good as what our customers tell us that they were good of. And so I know how to operate and execute missions at probably a faster rate than most in this room. My point being is that I had to execute to what the people asked me to do. They wanted us to be more community-focused. There were people, we did not recuperate even. There are still a lot of people that are still struggling to find jobs. The economy is not the same in San Antonio. We're one of the fastest-growing cities and yet the poorest when you compare us to other big cities. And so part of what we're trying to do is modernize how we do things, not to lower the bar down, to be responsive to what the community wants, to be responsive to an economy that will continue to face. It's going to be fluid. If it's not going to be due to a climate crisis that we don't have to in six months or a year from now, it may be, you know, the interest rates again. It could be a recession. We're not, again, in a stable environment that we could easily predict. So I do like that we're moving into, again, a business model that is fluid with accountability and it's driven by the community. And so I will continue to be okay with being criticized for moving this organization forward and being told that I lean in too hard. I'm okay with all of that. And I'm also very okay with not getting all the support from my board members, but what I'm not okay with is being accused that I'm lowering the bar. The contrary, I challenge this, everybody that I meet with, probably keeping meetings longer than they would like. And part of it is, how we communicate is important. One of the best feedbacks that I got was how our PowerPoints are easier to read. People understand why we need money and where is it going. It's transparent in how we're speaking to people. And so I will continue to do my best to work with my colleagues. For those of you who want to work with me, I'm always available to you. I will continue to challenge and be open to feedback from this board. I think we have some excellent members who have very specific views and a very unique approach in how to do this. I don't believe in always staying with the same vendors. I think fresh perspective is good. I'm glad that it's a woman, you know, they're, you know, I'm going to give you a shout-out for that. I don't care if you have two years or 30 years of experience. Fresh perspective is important, and the need for a third party to validate is important. So I'm going to just conclude again. I want to thank all my colleagues for their feedback, their concerns. I want to thank the community and everybody who's in this room because we will continue to challenge you, because I'm going to tell you, winning is easy. Yes, we got the rate increase. How we execute now, we're going to be under a bigger microscope. And so really, we're challenged. Now we got what we wanted, now how do we execute? And that's really our responsibility, the accountability of what we said we were going to do and why we wanted the money. And then how do we execute? Because that's really the pressure now. That's a new pressure where if we miss a target, and let me tell you, this is ambitious. If we really look at slide five, this is a very ambitious execution and not an easy one. It's easy for me to relate to the ERP because I've worked on these. This is a big one right here, and everything is tied to the customer experience on this one. And it's also integrates with our systems being more responsive, right, to, again, extreme circumstances. And then the growth, these are four major tasks that Dr. Romero will have to inherit. But my point is, this is an ambitious tasking, and it needs all our eyes, and it needs our support because there's not a lot of room for mistakes in today's environment. So on that note, thank you very much, and we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item if there are no additional questions. So thank you. The next item is number 10, which is the 2025 budget discussion. Mr. Gonzalez, if you could please proceed.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know everybody's asked, another Gonzalez? We're everywhere. I'm sorry. We're everywhere.
That's right. Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay. Related to me, by the way.
Okay, well, thank you, trustees. As you mentioned, my name is Geronimo Gonzalez. I'm the senior director over our budgeting area, my team staff. The agenda, I'll be walking through two items. We'll go through the governance requirement to approve the O&M and capital budget, and then I'll walk through some of the numbers and ask for your approval. I do want to take time here to thank several of the teams that helped build this budget, the operational teams that were thorough in communicating the requirements, the financial services teams that led the development of the budget, our financial advisors who provide counsel on the macro-level financials, and of course, the city staff who we spent several weeks going line item by line item on this budget as part of the rate request. This is the matrix that outlines the components of our budget and the required governance. The nonfuel O&M and capital is what we'll be requesting approval for today. The amounts requested align and have not changed since we received approval for the rate support in December. These next few slides break down our O&M and capital costs into major buckets of spend. I'll give some insight on how we plan to execute the budget. The drivers we went into in depth during the rate case remain the same: staffing, technology, plant maintenance, reliability, security posture, and inflation. For fiscal year '25, our nonfuel O&M is $890 million. Part of that is attributable to labor. We're trying to bring on continuing to hire frontline personnel, customer-facing personnel, and engineering and design personnel needed to blueprint the work that the crews accomplish. Next bucket is plant maintenance. That is the spend that keeps our plants up and running. You can link it directly to what John just presented with our plant availability. It funds the materials contracts, water fees, and regulatory fees associated with performing maintenance on our plants. This also includes our cost allocation for the South Texas Project SDP units. There will be two refueling outages in fiscal year '25, and normal years are only one, but every third year, there are two. So those additional costs are also included as part of that bucket. I'll highlight a few more. When we talk about our evolve strategic priority, that spend is accounted for in our technology bucket. And when we talk about SADI, bringing customers back from outages, that spend is accounted for in our electric and gas infrastructure reliability. So those are, on top of that, there's also, you can make the linkage to the strategy on the gas leaks. The compliance work that's done by our gas department is also in that electric and gas infrastructure reliability. On the capital side, we have the majority of our spend on reliability programs, things like cable rehab, reclosures, pole replacements, underground line strategy, and our substation and transmission. This is to care for our 17,000 miles of overhead, underground, and transmission lines. Other items that I'll call out, we talked about growth. Our plan calls for customer growth of around 2%. We install roughly 22,000 to 25,000 new meters every year. That growth is accounted for in the second bucket there, which is system growth. Okay, last, I want to go to the very last one there. I'll call out our service, well, that one, we fund our fleet requirements, and then also our West Side Service District, which is scheduled to begin expenditures this fiscal year, fiscal year '25. This is an overall view of, gives you a picture of the overall financials. What you're being asked to approve is the O&M and capital line items in orange and how they reconcile with the numbers that we provided during the rate case. The fiscal year '25 plan, it remains unchanged from what we approved in the rate case earlier or late last year. So this is a request for approval. The way forward pending your approval, we'll continue to execute, start planning for this fiscal year, and as we've done the last two years, we'll provide a public-facing budget document that will be posted online that gives more granularity to our customers and constituents on the different budget items that we'll outline. That'll be roughly 60 days after budget approval. And so with that, I ask for approval, or I can take any questions you may have.
Yes, again, does the board have any further questions? I believe we do. So we're going to start with Dr. Romero, and then I'll have a question, and then we'll pivot to Dr. Steen. Well, promoting him to Dr. Steen.
From a process standpoint, ma'am, do you want to defer discussion until after a motion is seconded and made?
Sure.
Please.
Process.
Move that we approve the capital and nonfuel O&M budget for fiscal year '25.
Okay. Open to discussion now. Dr. Romero?
I had a real quick question. I'm curious because you mentioned it. How much does it cost to have to do two refuelings in a year at the SDP?
Each additional refueling is somewhere around $25 million. And so the component parts of that is the refueling of nuclear fuel, but then while the system is down, they do a variety of different checks of systems and maintenance, which is why that number is large.
I do have a question on slide number four for labor. So we have salary, wages, benefits, and other compensation. So my question, just wanted to make sure, Lisa, I'll probably ask some more questions to you. This excludes a bonus, correct?
There is no incentive plan in these numbers.
Can you kind of walk us through how, I believe y'all do merit process? Can you explain that? I know there's always confusion. I just want to make sure that we're clear for the community that there's no bonuses for the CEO.
There are no incentives built into this construct. The annualized increase is a 4% increase budget. That's the budget we allow for increases across the organization, and they are tied to merit. So an employee could receive zero, or they could receive more than 4%, they could get a 5%, but there are no incentives built in.
And then that's across the board?
That's across the organization.
Okay, so it's not based on lower-level executive C-suite, it's just across the board?
The represented workforce has a...
The union.
...in place, that's right. There is a 4% built in for them, and then for salaried individuals, the merit increases could range depending on their performance.
Okay, thank you for answering that question. That's my only question for right now. Dr. Mr. Steen, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chair Gonzalez. I want to thank Geronimo Gonzalez, and you've got one of the... I want to thank Geronimo Gonzalez, and you've got one of the longest titles of anybody I know. Senior Director of Budget Analysis and Management Reporting. Now, I always appreciate your presentation and your insights. Mr. Gonzalez, I went back and compared your presentation today, which of course is entitled Fiscal Year '25 Budget Discussion, to the very same presentation made to the board a year ago on January 30th, 2023, to be exact. And that comparison has raised some questions in my mind. Last year, the fiscal year 2024 budget discussion was presented by our very able CFO, Corey Kaczynski. And my initial question is, why are you presenting this time rather than Mr. Kaczynski?
We have a copy of last year's budget so all trustees can reference to it, just to make sure. If you could just make sure we all get a copy. We're going to continue. I want to make sure Mr. Stein speaks, but in fairness to everybody, it's good to have a copy. Go ahead, Mr. Stein.
Well, let me answer. You shouldn't be answering this question, Geronimo. We're trying to grow our team, trustee Stein. So we're trying to give leaders at all levels of our organization opportunities to get in front of this board and present the work that they're, Geronimo is responsible for our budget. So there's a lot of executives that we're going to kind of rotate through, presenting to the board on various topics because that's what it takes to implement a successful succession planning program. So that's why he's here today.
Good, thank you. That's good. As might be expected, many of your slides mirror the slides from last year with, of course, updated numbers, but some of last year's information, in fact, some complete slides are missing. And so let me ask you about what I'll call omissions, if you'll please put up slide six. So this parallels the same slide we viewed a year ago, but with a major omission. Last year's fiscal year 2024 plan summary had a seventh line directly underneath R and R fund additions, and it was labeled net income. It's missing this year. Why?
Sir, this was, we wanted to make it consistent to what we presented in the rate case. It's not an attempt to try to omit anything. We have those numbers, and we can provide it to you if you need.
All right, well, we're being asked to vote on this today. And would you kindly disclose the net income numbers for each of the three columns? For example, based on last year, the net income number for fiscal year 2024 plan column, that first column, should be a negative $21 million. That's what it was.
For fiscal year '25 plan, it is a positive number, sir.
But you don't have the numbers.
Our books aren't closed yet, sir, so we don't have the final performance of last year's budget to tell you what the actual was.
But it's projected to be a positive.
It'll be a positive, yeah.
Yeah, well, if we're talking about fiscal year '24, sir, it's going to definitely be a positive, obviously because of the summer weather that we had.
That's right.
Positive.
But what about, in terms of the plan we're being asked to approve today?
It's a positive number as well for fiscal year '25.
But you don't have the number?
The number is, let's see here, $1,500,000. So it's almost break even in fiscal year '25.
$1,500,000 would be the number underneath fiscal year 2025 plan, the net income number.
Yes.
Okay. Second omission. Relatedly, last year's appendix included the slide 16 and labeled fiscal year 2024 net income budget, previous budget to current fiscal year 2024 budget. And I have it here. I wish I could show it to everybody, but it stepped through how a previous fiscal year 2024 plan, that is, it's kind of complicated. That is, as a fiscal year 2023 net income number became through a series of pluses and minuses, the planned $21 million loss contained in the fiscal year 2024 budget and approved by a majority of this board on January 30th, 2023. Are you familiar with what I'm talking about, where you have the green bars?
Yeah, the waterfall chart, where you have green and red.
You call it a waterfall chart?
Yeah, we call it a waterfall chart.
Trustee Stein, let me just break in here. We just went through all that information as part of the rate case. The board just saw every bit of our five-year outlook in December as part of the rate increase. All this does is validate the numbers that were approved as part of the rate increase. So I understand what you're trying to do here, but we just went through all that information in great detail as part of the rate increase vote.
Mr. Garza, we're trying to approve a pretty big number for our budget.
It's the same thing, sir. It's the same thing. It's the exact same thing that we just approved as part of the rate increase.
But why isn't it part of the package today?
We've already been through it. This is just a validation of those numbers.
Just real quick, if we could let Mr. Stein continue with his questions. Go ahead, Mr. Stein.
Thank you, Chair. This was a helpful slide, and of course, I'm wondering why it was omitted this year. The third omission, also during the same presentation a year ago, there was the slide 18, the very last slide in the appendix entitled Bad Debt Expense Projection. And why was this information not included in the materials we received in connection with your presentation today?
The bad debt expense and the accounts receivable information that we reviewed during the rate case is the exact same thing that is in this plan, sir. There hasn't been any changes to it.
All right, the chart last year forecasted a dramatic decrease in what was labeled on the chart as pandemic bad debt as opposed to normal bad debt. And again, I've got a copy of this slide. That dramatic reduction hasn't occurred, correct?
The plan still accounts for a reduction in our bad debt expense, yes.
All right, and what are the latest past due numbers? Or do you or Ms. Hardwick have these numbers today?
That information is distributed in a board communication to all trustees on schedule.
Yeah, and to your point, the bad debt expense has gone down. Last year was nearly $60 or $70 million, and it's closer to the past due account. That would be for, those are the items that Deanna does present on a monthly basis, and I would assume, Shannon, we would get that in a normal mailing rate.
I think at this point, Mr. Stein, go ahead and continue, but we're confusing the community, so I'm going to go ahead and let you ask the questions, but then...
Yes, ma'am. I don't have much more.
That's okay. Just real quick, just want to make sure, Shannon, we're taking notes so that we can clarify if there's a need for the next meeting or anything that needs to follow up. Because again, Mr. Stein, continue, but there's a lot of questions, and so I want to make sure we kind of recap to be clear for everyone involved. Go ahead, Mr. Stein.
Well, Mr. Gonzalez, I know board presentations like yours today go through many levels of approval, and I imagine the significant omissions I've outlined above had to be okayed. And so would you mind telling me who was involved in these omission decisions?
Myself and the Chair are responsible for the agenda and the final approval of materials for the agenda.
And ultimately, trustee Stein, I'm responsible for all of it, so there's no need to ask Geronimo this question. You know, if you want to be critical of the presentation, ultimately, nothing gets put in front of the Chair that I don't approve first. So I approve this version of our presentation.
So, and I don't have much more. The other aspect of this fiscal year 2025 plan summary that I want to focus on is that we're being asked to bless the plan with the debt capitalization ratio. One of the big three metrics closely monitored by our three credit rating agencies is budgeted at 61.7%. You can see it up there. The threshold is 60%, and the lower, the better. So CPS Energy is headed in the wrong direction. So please put up slide 12. Disturbingly, on this slide entitled Financial Health Forward Look, it can be seen that management is planning for our debt capitalization ratio to increase to 62.9% in fiscal year 2026, and then to 64.6% in fiscal year 2027. What's not in your presentation today, that is on November 26, I believe that's the date of last year via email, senior management confirmed that our debt capitalization ratio is projected to increase to 67.9% in fiscal year 2029, even with the planned every-two-year rate hikes baked in. Again, the 60% is the threshold, so this is way out of kilter. Let me conclude by stating that although I appreciate Mr. Gonzalez's expertise and presentation, I'm going to vote against approval of the fiscal year 2025 capital and non-fuel O and M budget for two reasons. First, the omissions I've called attention to have shaken my confidence that I'm being provided all the information I need to ratify your recommendation. Secondly, I can't support a budget that produces a debt capitalization ratio beyond the 60% threshold. Of course, a budget, of course, is a plan, and I can't sign off on a plan pursuant to which the over-leveraging I'm concerned about will dramatically worsen in the coming years. And finally, Ms. Ramirez, I'd appreciate if the minutes would reflect the reasons for my negative vote. Thanks, and that's all I have.
Thank you for that. Any other additional questions?
Chair, may I?
Yes, sure.
So, you know, all of this information was part of the rate request. All this information has been shared with the rating agencies, and I think it's very consistent with the narrative we've had about going into a high investment era. It's also very consistent with the conversation that Dr. Soltal had around the financial resiliency metric, where all metrics work together. So I just want to close with, you know, this budget that Geronimo, thank you for presenting, is in complete alignment with the rate request that the board approved several months ago, and there's no inconsistencies. There's no omissions that are not readily transparent for anyone, including the board trustees to see. So thank you very much, Chair.
Go ahead. Dr. Mackey?
I'm supporting of this, and I am so glad that we've changed our individuals that have been working on our metrics for so long. I don't care if it's 2011. If you go old ways, you get old ideas, and you fade out. I like the new ideas. I like new things. But sometimes people forget, you change things to your benefit and you forget about others. I got confidence in this administration for doing their jobs, doing their job. All administrations doing a wonderful job. The changes in the capital and non-fuel O and M budget for fiscal year 2025, you have given us the right information. You've been giving it to us all year long, and it hasn't changed. And my mind has not gone bad on me. I hear it so much, and I'm pleased with it. So I recommend that we move forward with this, and I support it. Thank you.
Before we move forward, Dr. Romero has a question.
I know this is a huge question, and we've talked about it before, but I just wanted to give you the chance to, and I'm sorry if Corey said this and I missed it. On slide 12, can you explain a little bit how things like the power generation plan and the ERP help to explain the '26 and '27 debt capitalization ratio?
Yes, ma'am. So the debt capitalization ratio has a lot, is predicated on obviously how much debt we take on. The GEN Plan capital plan, starting in fiscal year 2027, 2026 escalating in 2027, when we start bringing on a 202 megawatt peaker, the investment starts going up. So in those particular years that you're seeing, '26 and '27, between ERP and our GEN Plan, the investment is going up on a capital perspective. And so a good portion of that is going to be debt-funded, which is why you're seeing those metrics go up.
Okay, thank you, because it just gets back to my last point, that we can't just look at these numbers as the all-magic thing. There's a whole story behind them, and that story is how we're expanding to meet the needs of our customers. So, thank you.
And then I think this question is for you, Corey. Can you again remind us the interest rate for borrowing?
Okay, yeah. The interest rate for borrowing I have is, let's see here, hold on. I think I have it here. So normally, we estimate around 5%, especially over these next two years, and then it'll fall down as we normalize closer to 2% to 3% as we expect the Fed to cut down the rates. So that's normally where interest rate is.
Thank you. I wish I had 5%. I think mine is at 12%. So as a business owner, typically, in order to scale up, as we've been asked by the community, you have to borrow. And if I had 5%, I would also borrow too. Why use your cash? That also has been a very critical point and point of discussion and tension among this board when we don't have enough cash. So one way to reserve your cash is by not using your cash to scale up. And so I don't view these numbers wrong, and, you know, we're all going to, I do, honestly, I do respect the point of view that we often get, that we should be conservative in how we spend, and we need to be mindful of our financials. But in business, you have to spend to meet demands. You have to spend to scale. So unless we're going to be not making investments like we were historically pre-COVID and winter Yuri, look at what happened at the San Antonio Bennett School District with a little bit of COVID. My daughter, by the way, goes to one of those schools, and only seven kids showed up to school, including my daughter. But they didn't invest. They didn't invest. And so they had a crisis, and they had to shut down the schools for a week. Okay, that's a prime example, when you don't spend money in the right areas, but maybe you build beautiful buildings, right, in cash. So my point is, again, everybody's perspective is important. I sincerely appreciate the financials, and as we do through our process, when the books are closed, every trustee gets access to the financials. Again, each trustee, with any question that they have, I have a ledger where I want to make, I make sure that whoever asks for reports, everything gets sent to them on time, and then it gets done. So I will continue to do my best to make myself available, make sure that whoever asks for information gets it, especially the financials. So on that note, thank you very much, and if we can go ahead and do roll call for a vote.
Chair, Dr. Mackey? Trustee Stein?
No.
Vice Chair Romero?
Yes.
Chair?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, board.
All righty, that was a good discussion on the budget. If we can now move on to item number 11, which is the CEO recognition.
All right, so today I'm going to be recognizing members of our financial services team who in December were awarded the prestigious Bond buyer Southwest Region Deal of the Year Award in recognition of innovative transactions achieved in 2023. This is a first-time honor for CPS Energy. So that tells you what the Wall Street thinks about CPS Energy and the creativity of what we're trying to do up there with our financial strategy. First time, this is a first-time honor to be recognized as Southwest Region Deal of the Year for 2023. Three transactions were executed under a backdrop of a complex regulatory and political climate. The uniqueness of the transactions came on the heels of CPS Energy receiving an IRS private ruling letter allowing extraordinary fuel costs to be financed with tax-exempt debt, an uncommon feat in municipal finance world. The private letter ruling paved the way for our first tender transaction, which converted some of the Winter Storm Yuri taxable debt to tax-exempt debt and generated $14 million in net present values savings for our customers. Savings for our customers. Please join me in recognizing this group for their innovative efforts to continue to maximize the Winter Storm Yuri costs for our community. In addition, I'd like to congratulate Chair Gonzalez for her reappointment to the CPS Energy Board of Trustees, which was approved by City Council in January. Throughout our Chair's tenure on the CPS Energy Board, Chair Gonzalez has contributed to several large company initiatives and has been an extremely aggressive advocate for transparency and our customers every step of the way. Congratulations, Madam Chair.
Any comments on the win? I think it's a big deal. A lot of people don't find financing fun, you know, but you know what? This is the real work here. We don't always, it's not the sexy part of the work, but it's a very crucial part of the work. But I think what's most interesting is that we've been challenged also by City Council to be creative and find ways to offset costs and investment. And this is a perfect example of them, there were challenge, they found an innovative way to introduce something. It could have been done not, but we accomplished it. So again, this is a really big deal to be able to convert some of that debt that all of us are concerned about. And now, again, it's just a wonderful way in how it's transformed. So if you can add a little bit to that, because I don't think people realize the creativity in this.
Let me ask, I see Don and Eric, members of our financial advisors, y'all come up here. We couldn't get these deals done without y'all, so let's get, let's get a picture with everybody, because not everybody is up here. I was like, why ain't Don up here? I was like, why ain't Don up here? So Don Gonzalez and Eric PFM and, y'all just got bought out, Don. Yeah, sorry. They're with us as we work on our financial transaction. Don, why don't you introduce yourself real quick?
Don Gonzalez. He's a financial advisor. He did financial.
Yep. Eric.
Yeah, Eric Brown. Director. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you all.
Did you notice one female on the team? That's impressive.
Chief Leader.
Just one. We need to hire more.
You saw the whole team?
It's more women. I know.
Underwriters and everybody. There are plenty of folks involved.
You know how it is. Again, a male-dominated industry, so it was really nice to see a woman up there. Okay, next item. If there's any other questions or comments for the CEO's recognition, this is your time. If not, again, thank you so much. That was really important. I'm glad we got to highlight the team. We're going to go ahead, move to item number 12 to review the action items. Ms. Ramirez, is there any action items to review at this point?
Yes, ma'am. With respect to the action items that were previously open, we have one that will remain open, and that is the request from Trustee Steen regarding the mitigations for the top 10 risks that will be covered in the February board meeting, so that one is still open. All of the remaining action items were closed, so I wanted to review the actions to close those. The request from the Vice Chair to engage with the City of San Antonio to discuss large-load customer strategy is an ongoing matter that will be reported up through the Ops Oversight and Technology and Resiliency Committee. The request from the Chair to complete the annual reviews of all committee governance has been worked into our annual action items, and we will review the action items annually with the board. The request from Trustee Steen to add matters into the appendix on the third quarter performance review were completed immediately. The request for Trustee Steen for a copy of the chart referenced by Councilman White was provided in hard copy to each of you today, so that matter is closed. The request from Trustee Steen for written description of information regarding metrics and targets was included in a board communication that was sent to the board last Friday. The request from Trustee Steen on the explanation of costs and expenses of our winter DR program was included in that same board communication. The request from Trustee Steen on which customers receive payments from the DR program subject to the confidentiality limitations that we had was also included in that board communication that was sent out. The request from Trustee Steen for a copy of the financial analysis on the DR program was also included in that board communication. The request from the Chair to move information on the winter DR program to the CPS Energy homepage was completed the same day. Confirmation of dates for the board meetings was also previously sent to the board via communication. So again, we have a single open action item from the previous items, and I have three new action items for today. On Agenda Item 10, I have a request from Trustee Steen to include comments. I'm sorry, this was Agenda Item 9. Request from Trustee Steen to include his comments in full in the minutes. On Agenda Item 10, I have the Chair's request to resend the budget presentation that was presented last year for the approval of last year's budgets to all trustees. And then I have, on Agenda Item 10, Trustee Steen's request to include the basis for his vote, no in the vote in the minutes. That concludes the open items, ma'am.
On my item, it's not just to send the presentation, but if we can, I know it sounds like a lot of, a transcript, I really got lost with the points of claimed omission, and I don't know, there was a couple of very specific things.
I'm happy to send a transcribed copy of the recording to, and I say transcribed, I will transcribe it, so I will take.
And it doesn't have to be perfect. I just think it's important, and that way I can review it and ask some additional questions just to make sure, and again, in full transparency to everybody, it's up to trustees if they have additional questions. But I definitely do want to follow up a couple of points that Mr. Steen made. Is there any corrections to anything else?
I have that I will send to all trustees, the discussion of Agenda Item 10.
That's fair. Mr. Steen? Go ahead, Mr. Steen.
I've got the materials from last year, so.
Materials, it was the conversation that took place at this meeting.
Yes, sir, I will include those as well.
Can you make sure that Dr. Mackey's items also get included into the minutes?
Yes, ma'am. So I have.
So I know Mr. Steen has a copy, but I actually want the transcription of the concerns he stated.
Yes, ma'am.
I know he has a letter, but I don't know to him what he wants to send us, or you can just transcribe.
Yes, ma'am.
Alrighty. Very much for reviewing the action items, Shannon, Ms. Ramirez. Item number 13 is executive session. For executive session, let me make sure. We have item number 13, A Attorney Client Matters 551.01, and Competitive Matters 551.086. If you can go ahead and take us into executive session.
At this time, the board is going to recess and do have executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted in our several visions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, as previously referred to by the Chair. At the conclusion of executive session, the board will reconvene an open session and continue the meeting. It is 2:40, so we go to executive session.
We have item number 13, A Attorney Client Matters 551.01, and Competitive Matters 551.086. If you can go ahead and take us into executive session.
At this time, the Board is going to recess and do executive session to discuss matters that have been duly posted in our several visions of Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code as previously referred to by the Chair. At the conclusion of executive session, the Board will reconvene in an open session and continue the meeting. It is 2:40, so we go to executive session.
Okay, Ms. Ramirez, if you could please bring us out of executive session, please?
Yes, ma'am. It's 3:02 PM, and the Board has concluded executive session. I can confirm that there were no votes taken and no matters were discussed, that were not part of the posted agenda. We have a quorum, and we can proceed.
Okay. Item number 14, which is adjournment. Moved by Dr. Mackey, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Romero. We will be concluding the meeting at 3:03.